We'll call the meeting to order, we have a forum, uh, taking motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. They're second?
I'm second.
Motion second on favor, I.
Alright.
I opposed. Gary, Rich.
Morning.
Good morning.
That's why we got some cooler weather here, the guys are gonna try to be scraping on these gravel roads and get some of that ice pack pulled off so that when it does get warm in the next couple of weeks you can kind of reduce the amount of water stuff on the road, so also that's a good way to. Um, and then we'll have this month, we'll have three projects in the DOT. The eleventh sixteen, we'll have the one oh five project, we'll have the that special bridge on three ninety street with the special funding and then we'll have a parent fifty street, bring a little box cover project, so. Pretty big projects coming up here this month for like.
We're at on three fifty?
Uh, it's east of the interstate, I can't remember, there's two of them. I can't remember. It's. There's a couple, I think it's this one right here, there's two. Um, and I did get a, I did get a phone call from one of the paving contractors last week. And, uh, I think we'll probably see some favorable pricing, there's not a lot of work out there for these guys, so hopefully things are.
For the concrete guys?
Guys, yeah, so we'll see some favorable bids.
Good.
Time will tell, but, uh, all he told me was they'll be in bloodbath, so that's always good for us.
Everybody's hungry, that's, that's why we wanna kind of stick with it.
Cause we can do it.
I've kind of heard that across the board and other places too, that there's.
Well, I looked at the last two.
Ton of bigger projects around right, yeah.
I, I looked at the last two lettings and usually they're the bigger ones, um. You know, we, that's an eight mile, eight and a half mile project, there's nothing that big out there, I mean, I've got a six mile, six and a half mile, I mean, that you're kind of needing that one here, I mean, those are big projects that people.
Right.
Other than that, there's like one mile projects more urban than rural, so I don't know, well, maybe a lot of people doing mine as well.
You want Mitchell go in this month too, or does it, so maybe that contractor will try to get hungry or you just never know.
Grab the bull. That's the one thing he brought up, because we had some other ones that we were gonna do. Well, yeah, hopefully we'll see some favorable pricing in the concrete side of things.
Good.
Um, and then, uh, Judy had brought up something to, uh, on Friday. Uh, some property off of the highway nine, uh, down by, uh.
The curve there.
For the curve, yeah. And so, apparently, for the longest time, there's a there's a, uh, an abandonment of right away down through there, right off the curve.
Yeah, west of the interstate.
And supposedly, so it's that, there's two little Iowa nine used to come over and then up.
Yeah.
And then they redid that road, um, and then all of a sudden, for some reason, we must be maintaining those little legs, but that state right away, in fact, it's not state right away anymore, it's all private. They've got a, an abandonment, a right away abandonment that includes those two sections of road.
Yeah.
That, I guess, I don't know what direction to take, this is a this is a nineteen thirty picture of the old road on nine, and then back in the fifth, and then in the fifties, they rerouted it. And, uh, they were all nine, but for some reason now they're labeled three ninety at Evergreen, but according to document, that right away was abandoned in the mid eighties, so I guess, I'm not sure.
So it's been property for years?
I, I, I guess I'm not quite sure how things went back then as to who was initially responsible for that, or how, I, I'm confused as to what we should be doing, I mean, I, it's private property, we shouldn't be maintaining private property, we didn't know about it, but.
Have we been maintaining that?
I think we've been.
Okay.
On it and yeah.
That's, that's where Ron, that's Ron's place right there, that the, the farm right here.
Yeah.
That's Ron's grain set up there, isn't it? Warm rose.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yep. Yeah, you're right, that's Bronson's.
How it went from state right away and all of a sudden we end up, I don't know how that ever took place or what the situation was, but.
Right.
Been that way as long as I've been.
Right, right, yeah.
So that was vacated in the eighties?
Yeah, why it took from the fifties to the eighties to vacate, I don't know either, but.
Well, I'm in two thousand and six, when we took the, when we created the GIS, we took the DOT road layer and it's still.
Still there.
Still there, that right away is still there, and the DOT road from their layer, so.
You never.
So their stuff was never updated when they, when they built theirs and their GIS.
Well, it might be now, I don't know.
Right, now, six, obviously. Which, that's fifteen years ago already.
Yep.
So, I, I don't know if.
So was that, was the right away given to the landowner there then?
Right, so I didn't read the whole abandonment, but I think it was the, the, the person on the northwest corner, they, uh, own the southwest that had been farming for years, and then I would imagine that the half of the roadway goes back to the property owner.
So that isn't the way the other curve to the north used to be too, is it?
I should, I, I don't know, she's been, she's been really, uh, digging into some of these right aways and then like, she just run it on me on Friday, Friday morning and stuff.
Yes, almost, I mean, that's a little different situation, but it almost seems like that they changed it, probably made those curves identical at the same time, so. Right away on there too, that needs to be.
Well, and Chris has always had stuff in that area.
Yeah.
He's always had hay bales and some stuff like that stacked up in, in that area around it, across from his cattle.
I would assume when they put the original road in, they did the courage, those kind of curves, the same, and they changed them, they put the bigger curves in so you drive faster, more safely. So.
I don't know how much we've been investing in these roads, but we do end up deadheading to Palm Open, Rich. So it takes a lot of time to.
You're saying they're, they're really private driveways and.
Essentially, they are, yes.
Cause they're not through roads, I don't know.
So. So, um, we'll get with, do a little bit more digging, I, my, my assumption is we shouldn't be maintaining them anymore, um, however, I wonder if there's some sort of a, whether we can write, so they look, we're gonna we'll, we'll blade this one last time, but.
Come spring, we'll straighten it up, but.
Yep, and from there on, it's your grazes.
Walk away from it.
Yeah.
If that's the way it's been since the eighties, I mean, on, and then on the other side, you know, I was wanting to check in that other side, man.
Yeah, I wonder if, I, I haven't talked to you. See if she's noticed anything up there.
Obviously, the, the blacktop going down the hill.
Should be.
Going straight west would be.
Should be ours.
Still be the same, but is that little stretch of road going to the south, north and south? Is that ours or is that private too then?
We'll look into it.
Just.
I mean, it's nothing that we were out here trying to find, she just was doing her stuff and.
Yeah.
And said, look what I found, and I'm like, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's good to know that.
Should be corrected if there's.
Right, yeah.
Anyway or another.
Probably be good to get Jeff involved.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, dig up, get a little more info on him and then let him look at it and see, see what he says.
Well.
Okay.
That's really all I have for you to update this morning.
Okay. Anybody else gonna answer it?
Are you gonna go back or are you gonna stick around for the meeting here?
I can go back up and log in too, or I could sit here.
Now, we should probably do a little bit of safety meeting, just go, you know. Always, always here. If we could kind of jump through that, a little bit.
Yeah, no, you can jump down there, that's fine.
So I don't know what you're doing as far as, I talked to this, um, to, uh, Mark. Mark, the I M W C, the record mark. Shafer, Mark Shafer, uh, he used to be, sounds like he used to be with OSHA and things like that, worked with them. He's a private consultant type of deal, that would come in and look over everything, not just yours, of his, we're sheriff, all the offices. You know, cause you kind of talk, doing something like that, right, or consulting firm, and, uh, you know, one of the first things he said, he told I M W C, and he said, I'm telling you too, he says, you're paying way too much for insurance. He said, I don't care if I am, but he says he likes it or not, and we're overcharging you, but you do have some issues that we need to, you know.
But they didn't until the last.
Right.
Year.
Exactly.
So.
But it went up way more than what he's even saying, you know, what he's seen industry wide, I mean, was pretty unusual, so, but anyway, he, uh.
They did out a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know. He, uh, one of the first things he would do if he came in here as a consultant, he says, we would, we would implement a return to work policy. He says, I don't care, he says, people need to come back to work, and you know, he worked with us on that, figuring that out, um, some of his references, he's worked with Quentin County, he's worked with Page County, I know he was working with some it's a city too, I didn't write that down, and what he does, he likes to do a three year contract when he does this. I don't know what other options are either, but anyway, his contract runs sixteen, fifteen, nine. At least the first year. Yeah, a month. So for the first year, he's gonna be here every month, the way it sounded, so we all have to buy into this, board supervisors and that, you know, which is true, if we're gonna do this, we have to buy into it. And, uh, you know, and I guess your whole thought would be if you're implementing that, those two costs are gonna come together, your insurance is gonna come down, you know, for the first year or two, it's gonna be a replacement of, you're really not replacing, you're paying for it either way. You know, eventually, he said, a lot of the people end up, you know, he'll go after a year or so, maybe on the quarterly or whatever, after two years, three years, four years, but, and he said, sometimes after three years, the county or the organization just picks it up themselves and continues on once it sets a program, so, you know, whether it's through an HR person or full-time safety.
Right.
Or you designate somebody as the safety type person and, uh, you know, um, and he point blank said, he said, some of the ways that some of the counties and places that pay for it is the people that have the bigger claims.
Yeah.
Comes out of their budget.
Yeah.
Uh, to start with, more, more of it comes out of their budget than out of the others.
That's where the exposure is.
Then it should, you know, it can shift, you know, so, um, but anyway, I had a good discussion with them, he'd be more willing to talk to us, you know, if they want to pursue that going forward, or if they want to pursue some other avenue, you know. It's something like that, we're gonna have to look at it, whether it's through him or whether NACA can meet those expectations, you know, I don't know.
Right.
They have their, you have your what, once or twice a year meeting down.
Well, it's, yeah, it's usually once and it's, I think it's happened here.
Yeah.
And it's just, I'd rather have it shorter, more frequent, I guess, exposures yearly and throughout the year, not just one day a year.
Right, and you know, that's, right now, I mean, it's, there's, there's really nobody in the county that we can say, okay, this is your job.
Yeah, it's not, they can then do it.
So.
And I know Russ had looked at something too.
Yeah, I mean, if there's other options, that's great, um, like he said, like one of the deals, like when we had this accident, you know, he would come in and you know, when you meet with OSHA and stuff like that, he helps, he comes in and helps get those forms reduced, he says, I know their lingo, you know, that's what I did, and.
Can you get a better pre-employment physical plan too?
I would assume he could work for those things, yeah, I mean, that's, as a consultant, uh, you know, we would have, we'd have access to, you know, all those things, it's, uh, so.
Not with getting the job distractions and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
There's a whole big.
Big thing that we don't, between having somebody like this and nature, contractually, HR person that we can really rely on to ask these questions to, you don't have that, and you know, versus coming in and hiring full-time people and paying all the salaries and the benefits, you know. You just have to have access to them more often, at least, at least from the get-go, and I know, hopefully that shakes things up in your plate.
Right, right.
You know. Talking about budget this morning already, it's like, wow, I really don't want to bring this up, but.
Well, it's something that, it affects the budget regardless of whether we do it or we don't.
Yeah. I mean, it would, it would come down to, everybody's gonna have to, you know, we'd have to say, okay, what percentage is secondary roads gonna pay what?
It'll be most of it, I'm sure. But if we budget for safety and that.
Anyway.
You put it in there and, and it's just part of, it also do a business.
Well, it is. I mean, when you look at the other factor where your insurance goes up sixty grand a year.
Right, no, exactly, yeah.
This, this would have been cheap to have ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, or cheaper, I should say.
Yeah.
I want to say cheap, but.
I, I agree with you.
So. I don't know, like before we do a number and you can chat with them too, if you want to find out more about or how it might help you and, and, or help the whole thing, I'd be happy to follow that.
Yeah, too.
In the wrong business.
Very well, there's no doubt about it.
Cause until we show we're doing something, our rates aren't gonna be.
Right, right.
Our mod's gonna be bad.
So, five, six, three, nine, four, zero, zero, two, two, six. Mark Shafer. Just chat with him.
And he's with I M W C.
No.
He was a, he was a, he was a consultant that they gave you.
Yeah, he's a private consultant, he can kind of give you his references and.
Awesome.
What he would do, I mean, do for the county and for, you know, each individual department, cause he's gonna come in and look at it, not just secondary roads.
Oh, no.
Wanna come in and look at everything.
I completely understand that my department has the most exposure.
Yeah.
Just because of the type of work we do, it's, it's just the way it is.
Yeah.
So, I think it's something we need to just keep on the agenda, going through the budget process and stuff here in the next two to three weeks, and maybe something really to consider, so, but get another pair of years of listening to what he says, and then we can talk about it some more, so.
Yeah.
Alright, that's, that's all I have, I guess, you guys gonna need to ask questions?
I think we gotta look at it.
No, it's, we know we gotta do something. Been discussing that since the rates went up, and.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no.
Well, no, it's a great idea, do a little more homework on that. Okay. Jump back up to, uh, drainage.
Okay, the first thing I have is, um, John Rosenbrand emailed me late last week and he is asking for permission for ISU to enter the DD twenty-one west wetland site. They need to set up monitoring equipment upstream and downstream of the wetland, so we just need a motion to.
Just monitoring equipment for, did he say for it was for?
To probably judge how that wetland is working.
Working.
I would assume, let's, you know, see what it's, see what the water looks like coming in and then coming out.
Quality probably.
Maybe that's part of taking care of the requirements.
Must be.
The annual stuff that needs to be.
Yeah. Cause that, that's what I would assume, yeah, there's gonna test it coming in and coming out, and see what kind of nutrient reduction you're getting or whatever else, yeah.
I didn't know. You're right, that's what it would be, so. Even use motion, but, okay, that.
Um.
We just said.
Yeah, just do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's requirement, it has to be.
Right, yeah, cause we were already oh, we get down, they get some receiving done and stuff out there anyways, right?
Yeah, I think so. They're supposed to.
Yeah. And when it boils down to, uh, Army Corps looking over everything, we, yeah, we don't need them breathing down our necks or allowing Iowa State to do some testing. Yeah, we got some stamp warrants. Questions on the stamp warrant?
I think so, make motion to approve the range claims.
Alright, most approved range claims, they're second?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, the other discussion. Favor I.
Alright.
Hi. Opposed? Gary. Any else in drainage?
No.
Okay. Um, claims. No claims, no, any reports? No reports? Anyone eligibility or salary changes?
Nope.
Liquor license?
Nope.
ISA, benefits program renewal.
Or these assigned for the different programs from ISA, including our health insurance.
All the benefit, the benefits, basically.
Yeah.
That we all.
Through group benefit partners.
Vision. Yeah, take a motion to approve the, uh, group benefits program renewal.
I'll make the motion to approve those.
Alright, motion second, any other discussion? All favor I.
Bye.
Bye. Bye, opposed? Gary. And then law enforcement agreements?
No, it's the, I didn't, I just left it on, on Manly.
Oh. I took that off for a while. Put it back on when you see it.
Okay, sounds good.
Uh, safety committee discussion, yeah. Resolution. We team twelve thirty-one, um, are we agreement to update this resolution, take those percentage numbers out, we'll leave most everything alone and uh, do we have that in word form, Jackie?
Yeah.
Okay, will you send that to me and I'll rewrite it and, um, I'll email it to you guys, comparing the old versus the new.
Good.
And then we can uh, take action on it next week. Just to make it easy.
Were we gonna do anything as far as a sixty-five percent one or just leave that alone? Raise that a little bit or what?
It's kind of the safety area, I guess, I mean, I don't know.
First to spend.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we have to go any higher, it's what you're there, because that's just.
Gives you a max and on it.
Yeah, it does.
And I wouldn't go over seventy-five.
Right, and I.
That would be.
I think Jeff Hiles said seventy at the moment.
Cause that's what they usually, and I mean, they.
I think it's close, and that's why we're at that sixty-five, it's because that's kind of where Jeff's been.
Right. And it's, and I remember him talking to us, yeah, you wanna kind of be in that area where you've still got some room if you should ever need it, so you don't just take and gobble up everything, and then all of a sudden you get a one oh five project that has to be done and then you get nothing, so.
Right.
I mean.
I'm just thinking it might be a bad, not a bad idea to move to at least seventy, you know, cause you don't have to ever go that high.
No.
But you'd have the option.
It still max us at a point where we'd still have a buffer.
Yeah, we got a buffer in there.
Yeah, but.
Did you say Jeff said?
Yeah.
Seventy?
Yeah.
If I remember right.
That was his, that's his recommendation, that's, I think seventy percent, but. Leave it alone, or leave a, a buffer, basically, so.
What happens to that at the end then? That, that buffer, do we use that thirty percent every at one time, or?
Um.
That actually goes back into the budget.
It does.
Yeah.
Goes back to the authorities that.
Back to the authorities that we got.
Yeah. So basically, everybody that's, would be in that area, whether it's school district, uh, whatever else is in that area, and I have to always get, get their portion, uh, the school district, or like, everybody just break it down that way, um. Yeah, it just takes them twenty years to get it. Possibly, but then it's always there for us to capture it if need be, so, yeah, I don't have problems putting it at seventy percent, you know, and that we've got a stopping point and.
Right.
We still have our, still have our buffer, so. Okay.
I just thought as long as you were doing it, just something to look at.
Yeah, right. Um, the deed, the Diamond Joe Casino.
No, I have not heard from Jeff yet, so maybe I should just take that off until, yeah.
I know he's on vacation last week.
He's back now.
Yeah, probably not, top priority, he's probably got a list, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
Alright, we'll, uh, we can make contact with him this week and see if we can get him. You sneak in here at some point next week, or if there's anything he needs to do, but I think it's, he just needs to give us the paperwork and.
Well.
During the motion, right?
No, there has to be a whole, it's a whole process.
Is there?
I know he did mention that.
Oh, there might be.
So I probably should have just taken that off.
I might even get public hearing on it.
Yeah.
Cause it's, cause it's, it's moving land.
Probably is.
Even though it was given us to give it to, for the company to get rid of land.
Right.
Yeah.
There was more hoops than what you guys were thinking.
Yeah, it always is.
Why wouldn't there be? Just, it's, it's done deals, you get it all.
Yeah, a resolution, public hearing, and a resolution ordinance or ordinance approving the deed.
So many.
And he's gonna work on, he's working on it.
You have to get it set up so we can get through it, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Couple more processes, so.
And at least with three of us here, we can waive.
Right.
Waves.
Other two ratings.
Yeah.
Still gotta get the.
Yeah.
I'll have to take another thirty, sixty days to get it set up, so.
Okay.
Get it going by spring, so someone is interested, they can.
Yeah.
It would be nice to price them, get a price on those lots.
Yeah, um. Just over two lots. So, yeah, we, I'll talk with Jason this week and we'll get that number, and then we'll, uh, have Jason email it stuff to all of us and then we'll put it on or find out Jeff, how we're gonna do that too, to take that to a public hearing on that, to set those prices, but then we can set them lot accordingly, because some lots are gonna be less desirable, so those might be a cheaper lot, and then go, try to, try to get it so it averages out what we want to be.
Get a higher on a good lot.
Yeah.
So if we have to give a little bit on the bet, on the lots that aren't.
Yeah, yeah, and just try to get, get to that point, we wanna make sure we, we cover, so, okay, we'll work on that this week with him. And, uh, um, vacation on the roads, lovely, but not, when we're back, cool, I talked with Melissa, she had a meeting with Iowa Northern Railroad this morning, so she would be on, um. So, and then she's working with, uh, Jane and Willa on another forums, tentative we set for March nineteenth, what kind of places could be determined, so I should go down towards Manly area. And then tomorrow, a meeting with, uh, Mark Toma and John Lear to discuss some architectural drawings for the interchange, um, I mean, you can go participate in that one. And interchange has been updated on Lois and also on the ID website, so that's, uh.
Right.
Must be like a nationwide.
Yeah.
Economic thing, and I digs a Iowa one. And then four camera security systems, she, you, you've seen it, heard about it, looked at it?
Four.
Four, she's got one? There one over there?
Of course.
The department is in need of a four camera security.
Oh, Eric and I and her talked about that back when we were talking about technology, so maybe she's going through Eric on that one.
Okay, is it something that was in there, or?
Hmm, I think she was adding it in there, I'm, I guess I'm not sure if there was one or not.
But she's asking if any department is in need of one.
Oh, she's now.
To get rid of, must be getting.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I, I have no idea, I have.
The only camera I heard her talk about is for headshots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For fancy cameras.
Yeah, one, yeah. There must have been, there was probably some kind of security system in there, I guess, I don't remember.
I don't remember seeing cameras or if there was.
Well, see, part of that used to be one big telephone, so I think they probably had it at that time and.
Could be.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't remember seeing it.
And that's the thing, is what's the age of it, cause most likely it's outdated.
Well, it's nothing that would integrate with our systems anywhere here, so. Cause I was gonna talk time open for you guys, but at a later time. Well, it just, there's been, I talked to you earlier about it, there's a request to put cameras in it, uh, public health.
Uh, because of.
Yeah. Because of, uh, security concerns, uh, with that location, and then also there's been a request to add one to the courthouse, so I'm, I'm getting caught for those, so. Outside of, uh, court to court. There's, there's one there now, but it, it, the coverage is not what we're expecting.
A gap somewhere.
Yeah.
So they don't have a glass. They don't have glass protection.
The there was a request, obviously. From law enforcement.
Gotcha.
Uh. Okay. Yeah, like I say, Jason won't be here, I'll see today, but.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll chat with him on that stuff, uh, people service, do you guys read that?
Yes.
Yes.
Agreement?
Yeah, that's an agreement?
Yeah, contract, it's contract.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the. The contract for, um.
Their service.
Yeah, service out there, well, uh, Jackie sent me the two thousand seventeen one.
Good.
And so that was originally a three year.
Right.
Uh, which took us to twenty twenty.
Yep.
Um.
I'm extended.
We, well, we.
There's one before that, if I remember right.
Right, yeah, before that, but, so anyways, we took that contract and, and gave ninety-eight notice that we weren't very. Well, in that ninety days, we worked out and agreed, worked out with them, I guess, basically, so we rescinded our letter. But did we rescind it as a one year or, I think we just rescinded it, that thing, because what it states in here is, is it's an automatic renewal of two years.
No.
Okay, so twenty twenty being this last June, this is twenty twenty-one, so we still have one year in this contract. Because it's an automatic renewal of one year after where everything's going.
Okay.
Um, so I'm gonna contact these guys again. And, but my recommendation is, is we have to stick with this, because this is an agreement of the five years.
Right.
Starting July first, so if we're already in this.
For one more year.
Yep, for one more year, like we stick with it and then we can decide between now and then.
Did they make any major changes to?
I didn't see any, and if you want, I can, I can email it to you guys too, but I just, I took, I took out, printed it and was kind of comparing, making sure, and everything's pretty much the same. Uh. That I noticed, the same thing as it'd be, it's new, new contract for five years and then the same renewal of two years if you go. Uh, but yeah, it's, I should say, I mean, it's agreement, so.
Isn't there like a sixty day or ninety day that, if you wanna get out?
Ninety, yeah, ninety days by either party, um. And if there's a breach of, uh, this agreement, then it's a thirty day. It can be such a thirty day if that the, the parties didn't, uh, fix the breach.
And that's.
Which, that, that's both ends.
Yeah, the new complex.
Yeah, yeah, everything reads pretty much the same, uh, just dating and then pricing. But, so, yeah, I'm gonna talk with these guys, I, I'm pretty sure we still are good for one more year than with this.
Good.
So we'll kind of push this off to the side.
I agree.
I'm gonna write this one out.
Good.
I'll email it to you guys here, we're done, I'm just giving a look through and glance through the twenty seventeen agreement, so. Alright. Uh, department head discussion, is there anything on, uh, any COVID policies, I know we're through, end of March, right? Is our, our last time that we extended our, our policy, so. Um, so I guess now is the month to be considering what everybody wants to do, um, uh, before the end of the month. So then if we need to extend it or make the changes or whatever, um, so if any department heads have any questions or comments between now and then, feel free to email, so. Okay, appointments, I still haven't heard back from the two people I've talked with yet, I'm, uh, board of adjustment, so. I will keep picking away, I may go call them both this week again. Superberger Weekly, yes?
I had a meeting with North Iowa Regional Housing, and basically we just went through bills, they're getting a new accounting firm. And, uh, we kind of had to back up for three months and work our way through it. Other than that, they looked at what was available and then it was brought up that last, well, we could go today, that one of the duplexes in Clear Lake had a terrible fire inside of it, but it wasn't occupied at the time, so. That's about it for.
Are they still running a bunch of empty apartments yet?
I, I didn't think it was too bad, though, we got one here and there's, there's, there's a few out there, but they're not too bad, but they're, they're running a few, yes.
That's kind of odd, but, uh, they're running ten or twelve empty and they just weren't getting applications, so it's weird thing is that there was no interest in them, so it's hard to fill them if you don't have, if like that. Fill them, yeah, I'm sure they're running like eighty-five or ninety percent capacity, if not more, so.
You know, when you look at one for Worth County, but when you take in all the counties, you can get up to seven, eight million.
Mm-hmm, yep, okay. That it?
Yep.
Okay, Mark?
I didn't, I was gonna talk with Mark there and, you know, about safety stuff, um, but I also had, uh, public health on Friday and Central Iowa being in tension the same day, but, um. Public health, we just basically worked on, we're talking about last year's budget, she's on schedule for that, working on next year's budget, you know, just looked that over. Um, also talked about how things are going with COVID shots for them, things are going good, there's a lot of good things, I think we've done a good job and we could definitely use more product to get shots too, if they could get it, and hopefully that will be coming, because, uh, sounds like they've done a really good job setting things up and there's been a lot of good comments from the public on how they're handling it, so, and they got a pretty good list of people that are waiting in line, so.
Those people can remain patient.
Yeah, that's a big thing.
They understand it's not the.
Yeah, the phone calls are slowed down.
County's fault that they're, we don't have the.
Right, no, and I think everybody understands that.
Yeah.
Phone calls have slowed down, which is good, and, uh, so that's good, um, central oil doing attention, you know, doing, basically just going over the monthlies or quarterly stuff, um, as far as budgets and things, um, they are looking at doing a little bit of an expansion, and it has something to do with the adult wave, you know, getting some of those a little bit older kids, keeping them, keeping them in there a little longer, but and it's unfortunate you always gotta build it bigger, so you get separations and things like that, but, uh, it's definitely, and, you know, they've done a good job managing their finances down there, so. Tony borrows money, you know, he might set it up in five or ten years and it's usually paid off in four or two years, it's just, he's got so many things going on down there besides doing retention, you know, it's fiscal agents and everything, he's just, he's, he's got quite an organization down there, so it's.
He does.
The site took advantage of the one percent money.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, he got CARES Act, it was, the camera, what, it was millions, seven dollars, so, you know, and it's, I mean, it'll definitely help the bottom line, it's, you know, because of how the state is stating, and the, they're so slow in paying that we're always six months behind, you know, counties are bad enough, I mean, not in a bad, sometimes we're a couple of months behind, but the state is, you know, the reimbursement rates are just terrible. It gets done, but we're always, you know, they're always behind.
And is that one of those loans that there's potential for forgiveness?
Yes, and more likely, you know, they've dotted their Ts and crossed their Is, they're, they're, though, it'll definitely be forgiven, so, it's something we won't have to worry about, so, that's what I had.
Yeah, I know, I do, I was very impressed with that.
Right, that's one of, that's one meeting I don't mind sitting through.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I had, uh, care connections, mental health, I did make it over to Emmitsburg on Tuesday. To meet everybody in person, I've met, I mean, I've met him at like ISA stop before or whatever, but haven't sat in on that in-person meeting, I've been on Zoom with him the last three, four months or whatever, so, anyways, uh, getting the budget squared away. Um, like I say, I think we're gonna, we're, we're planning it, we're gonna be at twenty-eight dollars, um, instead of the thirty-five we were last year, so, that helps. Um, and Hancock County, well, there was talk of bringing them into the region also. But in the meantime, I think they're gonna go, they've put in a letter to go to Central Iowa, which is where Sarah Barto and Franklin are at Webster and Wright, Wright and Webster, I think, um, they're all in that. And anyways, uh, they, they did get, I think, accepted, uh, just the decision they need to make to go that way, because they were gonna levy at a lower rate than we were, so. Um, understanding, like, you know, they gotta do the best for their dollars as well, but, uh, um, so we'll see what, what actual decision was made, but that, they did get accepted anyways, so we'll see how it goes, but. So that'll affect our budget a little bit, um, as far as a carryover balance. Because we can be, state wants us at forty percent or less, and we would have been at like thirty-seven with Hancock, but right now we're sitting, we'll end up at like twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's, you know, there's some leeway there, so I think we're probably gonna be closer to thirty or better, but anyways, our, our, uh, lady's going down and we'll be getting the same services, they're making a lot of good contacts and connections over here with the providers in this area. Um, so hopefully, the transition is going very smooth right now, so hopefully it'll stay that way and, and then if people in our area need the assistance, they'll know where to get it, so, the new website actually is kicking off today, March first.
That's one thing we did, not interrupt you, we talked about over at public health, was that the mental health issues came up with the COVID and all this good stuff that's going on and.
Yeah.
You know, we've been in the region and, I know she's been there and talked to Jesse before, and just wanna make sure we get, get it out in as many places as we can, you know.
Yeah.
Churches and any kind of buildings, we can get the brochures out so people know the services.
Yeah, yep, and that's what they're planning is, uh, everything basically, yeah, March first, now I call kind of a pain for the employees, but all email addresses are changed, because now it's Care Connections of Northern, or Northern, Northern Ireland. That's the official name now, so the website will take off, um, and they're going to get the brochures, do the mass mailings coming up very soon. Um, to get them out, I think they're gonna go to every Oregon county.
Perfect.
Uh, just a flyer of some sort is what their plan is of all the entire region, so that, especially with us, because we're new. Um, this way the people over here can find out where to get their access and help, and, um, the ladies that are involved over in this area are getting very good response, because they're actually active over here and they're, I know a couple of departments around are impressed to see that, uh, people showing up at their door, they went to the jail, they've been to public health.
Yeah, we haven't had nothing for.
No, that's what they've said as well, we never really got this before, so it's good they're getting established over here, so, but. Uh, whether that, like I say, we're just mailing down the budget there and that's about all I had last week, so. Anything else need to come on the agenda?
Um, one thing I wanted to talk to you guys about was the, um, drainage, um, landowner meetings that we have to have, I know I've pushed them back. I was wondering if we can do it in March yet, um, I was wondering if you know, the FEH staff is gonna take a lot of our time, so I was wondering if you'd either wanna do, um, like March fifteenth in the afternoon, or if you wanted to keep going with drain, yeah, with drainage on the twenty-second, maybe.
We're here, we just will, yeah, it's worked for me.
Yeah, I try to keep my Mondays full, so.
Well.
This stuff, if I can.
To fall on Monday, everything, you know, everything else is during the week or.
Right.
So would the twenty-second be okay?
Yep.
That'd be fine, let's.
So do like one and two, because more than an hour is probably too much.
Right, so.
Well, I guess there's actually three, so would we want them, wanna split them up or?
So the petition hearing's at ten thirty?
Yeah.
And then can we, should we go eleven thirty and then one and then two? So we go at eleven thirty?
Yeah.
And we can do that and then get a short break for lunch or whatever and then do one o'clock, two o'clock?
Okay.
That work out?
The only thing, I mean, I'll, I might be out for an election appointment that day, so I won't be available to run Zoom, so.
That's, that's fine, we'll, one of us can. Handle that, I think, uh, obviously, when we'll just do them here unless we know we're getting a, there's court, suppose courtroom's right full at the end.
I'll have to have.
Check that out.
So, no, that work fine, let's just make it day, get it done. Get all about two and none in one day.
I don't think it'll be very much.
No, it's, I think the stuff coming in is, people know it needs to be done, so, and then we got a grocery list of stuff with FEH, so that's good, though. But including one today, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Otherwise I might bump it to the twenty-ninth and that'd be the latest I'd go.
Okay. Yeah.
Whatever works best for you.
Yep.
We're.
That's the day before an election, that's paying the buck for you, I get it, so, you wanna bump it for next week? Feel free.
Must check something off.
Okay. Uh, if nothing else comes from the board, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll certainly. Alright, all in favor, aye?
Alright.
Aye, meeting's adjourned, thank you.